Sorry, if I could, I'll go ahead and call our meeting in order. I appreciate everyone being here this evening. Item one on our agendas to establish a quorum of our board team. All of our board team members are here this evening, so I certainly appreciate them being here. Our second item is our invocation. We're honored this evening to have Father Felix Archibong, who's with the St. Joseph Parish, and he's going to be leading us in our invocation. If you'll go to that mic over there. It should be ready for you.
Let us pray. Almighty ever living God, you are the source of our being. You established institutions in the world through your gifts of wisdom and knowledge in men and women for the growth and well-being of all peoples. We thank you for the gifts of these unique men and women who are gathered here today for the betterment of our schools in San Angelo. We praise you for the things you have accomplished, they have accomplished. We also surrender all the challenges they encounter. We seek your guidance and trust in you and the resources you have given us. May we make good use of them to solve our problems. We pray for peace, love, respect, unity, openness to share our gifts with one another, and a desire to use this gift in service for the progress of our schools and our young people. We pray that you bless, oh God, the parents, guardians, their children, donors, and other groups who support our school system. We pray for the well-being of our teachers. May God grant success and fruitfulness of the daily endeavors of San Angelo Independent School District. We pray God to reward the hard work and dedication of all board members and faculty with blessings and joy. We ask our prayers through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
Thank you so much, Father Archibong. Our next item, as the students come forward, we have a number of students here from Goliath Elementary School, and they're going to be leading us in our pledges this evening. So if they'll come forward, and as they do, would y'all would stand, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Hang on, I told them that they could turn around, and everybody can sit down, turn around and take pictures, and then I forgot to introduce them by name, so I better do that. We have Annalysia Vasquez, Ty Skelton, Laurie O'Donnell, and Ricardo Del Rio. So again, thank y'all for being here. Any parents who want to take a close-up can do so now. Yeah, come on, Father. Okay, thank y'all very much, we appreciate it. Before we start our recognitions, I'll read our script for this evening. Good evening and welcome. As President of the Board of Trustees, the San Angelo Independent School District, I'd like to welcome all of you who are present at tonight's regular school board meeting. Also welcome those of you who might be watching this tape of this meeting on our public access channel, Channel 4. We appreciate your interest in our students. All items that will be discussed at our meeting this evening have been posted as required by state law. Also, as you may be aware, our board meets a minimum of two times per month, and most, if not all, the items on our agenda this evening have been previously discussed at a pre-agenda board workshop. As members of the San Angelo Independent School District's Board of Trustees, we're here to set goals, listen to reports from our superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, and personnel appointments, and to make policy for the school district. Please keep in mind that our meeting is a meeting of the Board of Trustees held in public and not a meeting of the public. However, with that in mind, we have an item on every one of our meeting agendas that allows anyone present who wishes to speak to our board team an opportunity to do so. I will make certain that we give everyone an opportunity to speak on any item not listed on our agenda this evening. Additionally, prior to taking any votes, I will ask audience members if they would like to make any comment at that time. Anyone wishing to make comments on either, in either item, please do, limit your comments to three to five minutes. In compliance with Texas state law, the proceedings are recorded and will become a part of SEISD's permanent legal record. In order that our tape might adequately reflect the proceedings, I ask that you please refrain from talking while others might be speaking, and also ask, as I remind my fellow board team members, to please silence your cellphones at this particular time. Again, it's my pleasure to welcome you to tonight's meeting, and thank you for taking the time to join us here this evening. We appreciate your interest in the activities of our students and the business of our district. Item four this evening is recognitions. Ms. Crutchfield's going to start off with our recognitions, so.
Thank you, and good evening, Mr. Lehman, Dr. Detloff, and members of the board. We are very excited to recognize Central High School Junior Cade Campbell as the 2019 UIL Academic State Champion in Physics. Before winning the state's top prize in physics, Cade won the overall science championship at the UIL Regional Competition this year. During the regional competition, Cade also won first place in physics and chemistry and second place in science team. During the district UIL competition, Cade was named overall science champion. Cade won first place in physics, chemistry, and science team, and second place in biology. 1,140 students took the district-level science test across 32 districts in UIL Academic Region 1. 187 of those students advanced to regional competitions across four Conference 6A regions. Only 31 of those students qualified to advance to the state competition. And Cade won that competition in physics. While these results are outstanding, what really sets Cade apart from most students, according to his physics teacher and UIL coach Carly Stevens, who's here with us this evening, is Cade's hunger to learn everything he can about physics, chemistry, biology, and math. Cade studies these subjects independently in addition to his assigned classwork. Mrs. Stevens says that Cade is one of the best physics teachers she's ever seen. I think it is remarkable that Cade helps other students prepare for UIL competition, and he also helps them in the classroom. We are so proud of you, Cade, not only for your academic success, but also because you lift the learners around you. Thank you for representing San Angelo ISD so very well. Now, we're going to take your picture, too.
By the way, he's just a junior, you know, so he'll be back again next year.
ROTC programs. It is our great privilege this evening to recognize our instructors and cadets from both of our JROTC detachments in San Angelo ISD. Both units received the Distinguished Unit Award for the 2018-2019 school year. The Distinguished Unit Award recognizes personal growth and accomplishment of the cadets, contributions of instructors as mentors, and the support of the school and local community. These students represent the best of the best of the nation's 900 Air Force JROTC units. Cadets and instructors, please come forward. We commend you this evening for your outstanding accomplishments. First, we'll recognize Lakeview JROTC, please, and Major Jason Eskwell from Lakeview Junior ROTC. We'll introduce the cadets who are with him this evening and tell us about his unit.
Evening to the members of the board and San Angelo School District Administration and the audience. Wanted to say, my first year as the senior instructor here at Lakeview, I'm very honored to be a part of an outstanding instructor and cadet team. We've worked extremely hard this year and accomplished many great things that our Corps Commander, Cadet Anna Vancil, will talk about here in a minute. So, very proud to be a part of this program. Kat Vancil?
On the behalf of TX948, I would like to say thank you to our cadets and instructors for all the hard work they've put into this 2018-2019 school year. The Corps this year have, has directed to incorporate our building of a better citizen by establishing a connection between the cadets and the community. This has been achieved by upholding our core values, our core goals of two community outreach projects, of which our Corps performed 10. A combined total throughout the year has been 2,876 community service hours, estimating a total of 23 community service hours per cadet. And not to mention the presence of three parades with hosting four separate community service projects on the Lakeview campus. In addition, TX948 has hosted two in-campus blood drives against Big Spring and us, and each time chiefs and maidens have won. As a result, we are expecting to expand our current 117 cadets to, with our recruiting efforts, in hopes of gaining 100-plus cadets already signed up for the next school year. This fortunate expansion will allow future cadets, along with our current corps now, to go and carry on the tradition of excellence of obtaining the Distinguished Unit Award. Thank you.
Mr. Lehman, I had the privilege of attending the Junior ROTC banquet at Lakeview, and I was unaware of the extreme positive impact that these guys have on about 15% of the Lakeview population.
At this time, please join me in welcoming Major Chris Carney from Central High School's Junior ROTC. He will introduce his cadets and tell us about Central's unit.
Hey, good evening, everyone. Thank you to the board for everything you guys do for our school district. It's amazing. This is my sixth year, and every year it just keeps getting better. The cadets keep getting better, support at the school keeps getting better. It is a cadet-led program. As you could tell with Lakeview up here, their cadets told you about their program. That is exactly what's going to happen here. I'm not going to tell you anything about the program, other than there's two other instructors, is Chief Kathleen Prince and Master Sergeant George Marquez. Sergeant Marquez, this is his 24th or 25th year. I can't even count that high, because I don't have any hands and fingers and toes, but he's been here for a long time. I'm going to introduce, the three that I brought with me are my incoming senior staff for next year. So I have my incoming group commander, my incoming deputy group commander, and my incoming ops officer. They're going to speak in that order, so I'm going to bring them up one by one, and they're going to tell you a little bit about what we did this year. So first is Ms. Sydney Cole.
Thank you all, thank you all for coming here and honoring our Junior ROTC unit. So at TX936, this year, we completed 4,446 community service hours with events including, but not limited to, a 9/11 remembrance ceremony. We provided spirit teams for Central football games. We supported the Central band at football games and at UIL competitions. Central High School, we also helped at Central High School Choir's Military Salute. We taught flag etiquette for 5th graders at Reagan Elementary. We helped at the Tom Green County Constitution Day. We held a pancake breakfast for teachers and staff. We also held a custodian appreciation dinner. We aided at the National Honor Society induction ceremony, assisted Angelo State ROTC with flag ceremonies, and at-home football games. We raised money for the Children's Miracle Network, and we also assisted with the Tom Green County Friends of the Library Annual Book Sale. And now Alex Sedenyo.
I'm Cadet Lieutenant Colonel Alex Sedenyo. Throughout this school year, we have completed over 50 color guards to include the district convocation, multiple central events, middle school and elementary school events, various local community events, and an annual fundraiser for Fort Chadburn with a Vietnam Medal of Honor recipient speaker. We've also participated in two parades, including the San Angelo Veterans Day Parade, as well as competing in eight drill meets. We brought home 40-plus trophies to include placing first overall and second and third overall once. Brett McGowan.
Hello, good evening. I'm Cadet Chief Master Sergeant Eliana McGowan, and I'm going to be telling you about some of our CIA trips we have in ROTC. CIA to us is curriculum in action. This is where we go learn about many things, which is not limited to, but baton death marches mainly is our main deal. So, we take a trip to Enchanted Rock every year, where we do camp out. We also climb and rappel, as well as complete a 14-mile hike, through not only in Chatted Rock, but downtown Fredericksburg in remembrance of the baton death march. We also competed in a second 14-mile hike from Central to Base Rec Camp in remembrance of baton death march, in March. We visited a woman's Air Force Service Pilots World War II Museum in Sweetwater, also known as the WOS Museum.
Lakeview High School who participated above district level in athletics, and our executive
We also hosted a cadet leadership camp at Howard Payne University, attended by 29 high
director for athletics, Brent McCully's going to help us with that.
schools across the state of Texas, and one school from Oklahoma with 260 attending cadets.
Well, as always, Dr. Detloff, Mr. Lehman, Board of Trustees, we appreciate the opportunity to be here.
Next school year, we are also planning to host a drill meet at Central, so this will
We have had a busy winter and spring.
be our first, our first annual one, and it will be very exciting.
Where'd y'all come from? No, just a winter and a spring sports season.
So, I hope you all look forward to that, and thank you, and I look forward to another
We have 29 male and female teams in our winter and spring sports, and of those 29, we had
great year.
23 of those sports advance, either as a team or individuals beyond district competition. So we've got quite a few folks here tonight, so we'll make this as fast as we can. But anyway, first up on the agenda is Central Women's Basketball. Okay.
All right, I'll say a few things about 18-19 Lady Cats. They finished with a record of 27 and 9, with a tough non-district schedule and definitely a tough district. We won the Bushes Classic Tournament in Copper's Cove. That was a big win. I think it's been a while since Central's girls' basketball's won that tournament. And in district, we narrowly missed a share of the district championship by one game, so a solid season by these ladies. I'll go ahead and introduce them by name now. Start with the freshmen, Deandre Allen. Our sophomores, Angelina Humphries. Madison Foley. A few kids not with us tonight, we have Junior Darren Green. Now our seniors, we have four great seniors on this team. First, Vanessa Cabrera. Paris Palmer. And not with us tonight, Victoria Lopez and Morgan Walker. Again, we returned about half the, half the players from the previous year's team, and this team did a great job in building on last team's success, and really did a great job this year. Give this ladies one more round of applause, please.
You guys come on up.
These guys here were members of the 2018-2019 Running Cats Playoffs for the first time in four years, and had, had a great, great season, finished with an overall record of 19 and 14, most number of wins that this team's had since I've been here. All three tournaments we went to, we finished in the top four. Here in our home, Doug McCutcheon, we made the gold bracket, gold bracket championship, and also in Glen Rose, we finished third, and in Midland, we finished third there. Showed, showed a lot of toughness down the stretch, had to go in and actually win a three-team little mini tournament to, to earn a playoff spot, and basically on back-to-back nights, so very, very proud of this group. We'll, we'll just go ahead and start on the end down there, recognize these guys. Senior Jay Sean Hall. Senior Devin Nixon. Junior Sam Novia. Senior Deveraux Minix. Senior Caleb Martinez. And Senior Owen Huff.
As you can see, we're a little thin tonight. Most of our guys are either at Jarvis Ed or working, but, no, that's the truth. But these guys had a great season. It's our second time to make the playoffs in three seasons since I've been back, so I've been fortunate to run with a crew of guys that, you know, can handle business and get it done. Looking forward to next season as well. Went to the Monty Hands Tournament, won that tournament 5-0, first tournament win since before I got to join the helm at Lakeview. Owe it all to my assistant coaches, Gerald Butts, Mark Arnold, who's not here, and Michael Fox has been with us for four seasons as manager and as an honorary assistant coach. But I'll start with Sergio Mendoza, Senior. Sergio is also helping with our summer league, he's coaching our JV this summer. Junior Jesse Greer. And Junior Ryan Avalos. And both those guys will be playing in two leagues this summer. We start workouts here in about 20 minutes. So, appreciate your time, thanks for having us, and looking forward to next year and doing it again.
I know I don't look it, but I'll be 43 in October, so I forget a lot of stuff. But Michael's, I guess it would have been my first year, second year up with Lakeview High School. Michael was recognized by the UIL as, I guess, Manager of the Year for the State of Texas.
And there's times when I'm a little late getting in the locker room, whether I'm talking with the press or something like that, but he gets in there and sets those boys straight, so I get in there and it's nice and quiet. And he's done a lot for our program, and his folks still do a lot for our program. So, you know, he's going to continue to work with us as long as, as, as we can keep him. And that's that.
or working, but, no, that's the truth. But these guys had a great season. It's our second time to make the playoffs in three seasons since I've been back, so I've been fortunate to run with a crew of guys that, you know, can handle business and get it done. Looking forward to next season as well. Went to the Monty Hands Tournament, won that tournament 5-0, first tournament win since before I got to join the helm at Lakeview. Owe it all to my assistant coaches, Gerald Butts, Mark Arnold, who's not here, and Michael Fox has
Michael's, I guess it would have been my first year, second year up with Lakeview High
been with us for four seasons as manager and as an honorary assistant coach. But I'll
School. Michael was recognized by the UIL as, I guess, manager of the year for the state
start with Sergio Mendoza, senior. Sergio is also helping with our summer league, he's coaching our JV this summer. Junior Jesse Greer, and junior Ryan Avalos. And both
of Texas.
And there's times when I'm a little late getting in the locker room, whether I'm talking those guys will be playing in two leagues this summer. We start workouts here in about 20 minutes. So, appreciate your time, thanks for having us, and looking forward to next year and doing it again. with the press or something like that, but he gets in there and sets those boys straight, so I get in there and it's nice and quiet. And he's done a lot for our program, and his folks still do a lot for our program. So, you know, he's going to continue to work with us as long as we can keep him. And that's that.
Okay, next up, the Central High School Girls Soccer Team, Coach, come on up.
Yes, it is. Thanks for having us out, I appreciate it. Just real briefly, this is a great group of young ladies, fantastic senior class as well, but very proud of what they did this season and continuing the traditions at Central High School. But we'll get it going. This group was 17, they had won 17 games, had one loss, had five ties on the year. They were undefeated in district, and that's their fourth straight district championship this season, and that's in three separate districts. 12 straight playoff appearances, bi-district champions, area champions, and final 32 in state this year. Two big records this year, we had four goals against us all year, and we had 19 shutouts, which is fantastic. I'll start with my seniors, we have seven of them here. Addison Bonaventure, Megan White, Kelsey Wallace, Madison Maven, Michaeli Pope, Anissa Fernandez, and Madison San Miguel. Fantastic group of seniors, they're going to go on and do great things, I know it. My juniors, we have six of them here, Avery Handy, Toren Martinez, Aspen Connell, Camille Torres, Leslie Nuno, and Madison Sharp. My sophomores, Kieran Moffett, Angel Alvarado, Laney Delgado, Kaylee Delgado, and my one fishy, Jules Mesa. And that's the 2019 Lady Cats Soccer Team, thank you very much.
First of all, thank you very much for allowing us to be here today. Unfortunately, unforeseen views in front of us, we weren't able all to be here, but this is an amazing team. This is a team that accomplished a lot, a lot. 2019 maiden soccer varsity team, 448 district champions, 448 bi-district champions, they were the 448 area champions, and they were the 448 regional quarterfinalist. And these girls, as I stated, were amazing. I want to recognize the seniors first, but before I do that, this season wouldn't have been possible without this man here allowing us to do what we do best, and that's to play soccer. My assistant coach is Rochelle Flores. Seniors, I have Annalisa Garcia, senior Mallory Govea, senior Prima Shay Gonzalez, and senior Naomi Marquez. We have some juniors coming back. By the way, there's 11 seniors that we're losing, and unfortunately, we have many that are working, and we're not able to be here. But let me name some of those seniors also. Yami Guerrero, Eli Davela, Abigail Borrego, then we have Taylor Spencer, we have Alazé Gutfias, Felicita Escobedo, Crystal Rodriguez, and that was the rest of the seniors. Now, my juniors, my juniors, as you can see, we have one senior, one junior, one junior that could be here today, and her name, matter of fact, I'm going to go ahead and let you know that she was nominated by the other coaches as your 448 all-district defensive most valuable player, Jackie Ortiz. And my apologies before I go on, Mallory Govea was nominated as first team all-district forward. Midfielder was first team all-district, I'm sorry, I'm getting ahead of myself, Bryce Crabtree, which is one of our sophomores. Another one of our sophomores is Autumn Porras, and our lone freshman that's here with us is Amore Collins. Great things that these young ladies also did. We have a lot going on over there on the north side, and I'm just proud to say that Coach Flores and I have had the opportunity to work with these young ladies. Like I said, 11 seniors, seniors that are going to go on into this beautiful world of ours, that are going to become mothers, soldiers, and continue their education. So, I just want to say thank you very much for the support that y'all have given us this year, and we're looking for bigger and better things over there at Lakeview High School. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you guys for having us out, we really appreciate it. Special thanks to Coach Hopkins here for working with our JV all year, he's done a great job with them. These are your district 448 champions, your bi-district champions, and your area champions, and currently, they are ranked number nine in the region. We have sophomore Angel Chacon, senior Eddie Martinez, junior and first-team defender Victor Zavala, sophomore and first-team midfield Isaiah Sanchez, senior and first-team forward Jonathan Ledesma, senior and first-team forward Dorian Madrid, senior Frankie Alvarez, senior and second-team midfield Noah Martinez, sophomore second-team defender Adrian Flores, junior district 448 MVP Daniel Ramos, freshman second-team midfield Joe Munoz, freshman first-team defender Josh Torres, sophomore Abel Mora, senior and district 448 defensive MVP Jesus Espinoza, junior Bodhi Sherad, senior and goalkeeper of the year Kevin Solis, and senior goalkeeper Tyler Davis. Thank you, guys.
As you can see, soccer's been really, really good this year in San Angelo ISD. Great soccer seasons. Okay, next up will be the Central High School Golf Team, Coach.
Thank you. This year, our Central High School golf teams had simply an amazing year, there's just no other way I can describe it. Our girls competed in the district 368 championship, and they got the runner-up position and qualified for regionals. At regionals, they finished in 10th place, and that team consisted of Mariah Gonzalez, who's a junior, sophomore Kayla Castillo, then we had freshman Emily Coronado, and then junior Paige Harris. Paige and Emily tied for 11th place individually and got honorable mention all-district. Our last player, and unfortunately, she couldn't be here tonight, was freshman Ryan Honie. She won the individual district championship, district 36A, got third-place medalist at the region-one tournament, which qualified her for state, and she did very well. Just to let you know a little bit about her, at district, she shot a 63 her first round, which actually tied the course record at Squaw Valley, and that's just unheard of. But she did, she had a great year this year. And they're looking forward, I'll have all five back next year, and they're looking forward to bringing home the district championship next year. On our boys' side, our boys competed at the district championships and won the district 368 championship, qualified for regional, and finished ninth place at the region-one tournament. That team consisted of junior Enrique Leva, who finished 11th place and got honorable mention all-district, and then junior Jaden Cates, got fifth place individually, senior Sergio Soto, got fourth place individually, and senior Colby Herring got fourth, excuse me, third place individual. And our team was rounded out by senior Flynn McNabb, who got second place, and all those four individuals got all-district first-team honors. I failed to mention my assistant coach, Tim Bozart. I couldn't have done it without...
Thank you. Okay, the Lakeview Golf Team is definitely on the up and coming. We've tripled the size of our golf team this year, and we're very, very proud. This young lady here standing in front of me is Annalise Castro. She is the one and only junior, we have a very young team. She is a leader among all of the girls and boys on our team, and she ended up third-place individual in district, which qualified her for regionals. And then at regionals, I believe she placed seventh out of, you know, 90 to 100-something young ladies, and so that is quite a feat right there, and I cannot wait to see what she does next year. So, Annalise Castro.
Hello, everyone. My name's Bren Abelaz, I'm the head coach at Central. As you can see, we have a politician, Bobby, he would like to speak, but we're not going to let him this evening. First, I'd like to say thank you to the school board, the administration, everybody, and a huge shout-out to the maintenance crew. These past couple of days, because of the storm, it actually knocked out the entire back fence. Our canopies got thrown over, which they weigh 200-plus pounds, got thrown over fences, and part of the gym roof was actually on the tennis court. So, thank you for everybody who had a hand in that, helping us clean that up and get all that situated. With that, we'll move on to the spring. We had a fall season, we did really well. In the spring season, I'll just say this much, we played in the coldest tournament I have ever played in in my entire life. I think it was 13 degrees in Lubbock when we got there to warm up that morning. So, we were warming up in front of the bus, doing some running, and then in Midland, we played in the windiest tournament I've ever played in, and it had to be at least 40, 50 mile-an-hour plus. So, that was fun. Moving on to district, we had our boys' doubles team, Bobby Hirschfield and Bryson Harmon, they were the 6A boys' doubles champs. And Bobby let everybody know about it. Bryson could not be here tonight, his paycheck at Bahama Bucks, he had to earn it. Second place, girls' singles, Jenna Fuentes, regional qualifier as well. In mixed doubles, we had Chanja Ross and Colby Bixler, they placed second, were regional qualifiers. And Hallie Jost and David Hensley were third place at the district tournament, were regional alternates. We had a great year, and thank you for everybody's help and participation, parents especially. And our banquet's tomorrow night, so feel free to come out, let's pack saddle. Okay. Thank you all very much. Oh, yeah, same thing. Coach Crete, she doesn't want to talk, ever, but we couldn't have done it without her.
Good evening, everybody. Boy, I've got a lot of things to talk about, just kidding, just kidding. I did have, we had, I took over the spring this year, and I got to meet about 16 varsity kids, and the same amount of JV kids, and it was fun to take over the program and try to make it better than what it was. We had seven regional qualifiers this year, I was really, really proud of them. We only had three that's going to show up, that showed up tonight, all the rest of them, we were either sick, twisted ankles, or working. So, I'll start off by talking about, first, the season. In the season, the team won three major tournaments. They won the Snyder one, they won Fort Stockton, and then they were a runner-up in Abilene. All right, we went to district, and in district, these ladies helped the girls' program win the girls' district title, and the boys came runner-up. Standing in front of us, we have Emily Han, who's a senior. She's been a varsity player for four years, and she was a runner-up in district and a regional qualifier, and her record was 20 and 11 for this spring. Yes. Next, I have Shay Price, and she's a junior. She's been a varsity player for three years, and she actually, she's a doubles, and her doubles partner isn't here, but their record this year in the spring was 16 and 3. Next, we have Kalen Hayes, and she's a junior also. And Kalen, we played mixed doubles, and her and her doubles partner were district champions, and their record was a 14 and 2. Okay. We've got a young team coming up, these guys that have been... These guys that have been playing tennis, and they're seasoned tennis players. We're going to be missing Emily and all the seniors, but we have strong juniors coming up. And I'd like to thank the administration and all the parents, especially the parents' parents, who are awesome as a support group for us. Thank you.
Okay, next up will be the Central Powerlifting, Coach Krim.
All right, I'd like to thank you guys for having us tonight, and thank you to our administration for everything you guys do for our athletic program as an entirety. Tonight, we have freshman Abby Stevens. Freshman Christine Martinez. Junior Kenzie Talamontes. And two that couldn't be here tonight is junior Ruby Randolph and senior Alair Montalvo. We had a great season this year. We had five girls competing in our powerlifting program, and all five of them made the Regional Meet, so that was, that was a big step for us. And then we had two girls, Kenzie and Alair, who could not be here tonight. They made it to the State Meet and competed extremely well there. So, we're looking for big things. We're losing one senior, and that's it. So, we're looking for, to continue the success next year. Thank you.
Okay, next up, Powerlifting Team from Lakeview High School, Coach Lyons.
We bring our groupies with us and our cheer group. So, I want to thank you all for having us tonight and honoring our kiddos. This is the 2019 Lakeview Powerlifting Team. We have our boys and girls mixed in. Overall, as a boys and girls team, we took 13 individuals to the Regional Meet. Of the 13, I've got 10 of them here, but all 13 of them topped, are placed in the top 10. Seven out of these kiddos placed in the top 5, which means they earned points at the Meet. We have two Regional Champions in the mix, and then we have a 3rd place finish at the State Meet amongst this group. And so, I'll call the girls out first. I have their, I have their totals also, so I thought I'd throw that out. Alicia Farr, she's a junior. She totaled out, she totaled out this year with 510 pounds, total lifted amongst the three lifts. This is also her first year to lift, so. Jackie Ortiz, another junior. She totaled out with 625 pounds. Yolanda Ramirez, we call her Yolo. She totaled out this year with 725 pounds. And Kalen Hayes, Regional Champion. Regional Champion this year totaled out at the Regional Meet with 845, but she bettered her maxes at the State Meet. Do you remember what she totaled at State Meet with? She lifted really well at the State Meet. And we'll blame her uncle that doesn't know her totals. And that's all the girls. We do have two other girls that could not be here with us tonight. And for the fellas, we have Ethan Sanchez, a junior, totaled out this year with 1,405 pounds. Logan Sanders, another junior, totaled out, lifted at the Regional Meet with 1,295. That was not his best lifts, but that's what he totaled out at the Regional Meet. Alex Rincon finished up with 1,145. He's the tall guy. And then a guy known as Thor or Sunshine. I promise, I bought him a long-sleeved shirt, but he says powerlifters need to show the guns. Carter finished out with 1,150 pounds this year. And then our lonely senior here today, oh, two seniors, actually. My bad. Sorry, Miami. Michael Sevier, he finished out this year with 1,150. And then that guy. Miguel finished out the Regional Meet as a Regional Champion. This is his senior year, by the way, and he's, he's been with me all four years. And just about every year, he's either been Regional Champion or runner-up, and he's been to the State Meet every year. This year, he finished out his senior year with a Regional Championship, lifting 1025 at the Regional Meet, but whenever he went to the State Meet, finished out with 1,105 pounds to finish 3rd place. And I'll have to research a little bit further, but as far back as THSBA goes, that's the association the powerlifting goes, that's the highest finish that Lakeview has had. And then I also had to mention my assistant coach this year, she's also my sister, Lindsay Boatright. And I have to be nice, because Mama's here watching too, so. This is your Powerlifting Team. Congratulations.
Okay, next up, we have the Central High School Girls Track Team, and Coach Meaton.
Thank you guys for having us tonight. As a team, we placed 4th at District and 8th at Area, and the girls that I'm going to introduce to you are the girls that made it to Area or Regionals. Start with the freshman, Kalen Edwards. She competed in triple jump. She was 5th place at District, which makes her the alternate, and she was bumped up and was able to compete at Area, and ended up placing 5th at Area and PR'd by like 19 inches. It was pretty cool. Peyton Mayberry, also a triple jumper. She placed 3rd at District, and she was 6th at the Area Meet. Leila Young, she threw shot put for us. Another freshman, she was 2nd at District, 2nd at the Area Meet, which allowed her to go on and compete at the Regional Track Meet. And out of the 16 qualifiers at Regionals, she was the only freshman. A junior, Yasmin Contreras. Yasmin high jumps for us. This is her 3rd year, I believe, to advance to Area, and she placed 2nd at District, 2nd at Area, which allowed her to go to Regionals, and she did very well there. Was that your second attempt, I mean, 2nd time at Regionals? Yes. Juliana Covey, another junior. Juliana ran the 400. She ran a season, well, actually a personal best, a career best time in the 400, which qualified her for the Area Meet, and then she also qualified for the Regional Track Meet in the 400. We have a mile relay, they're kind of split up up here. A mile relay that can, oops, sorry, one more. Sorry, Anastasia. Anastasia's our senior. She, she ran the 100. Sorry. She ran a personal best also this year, placing 4th at District qualifying for Area, and we're sure going to miss her, a senior, Anastasia. Now to the mile relay. These are, there's four girls on the mile relay. We've got three of them here tonight. Sophomore Sarah Scott. Junior Juliana Covey. Junior Zoe Bowden. And a senior who is not here tonight, Bay Hester. These girls placed 2nd at District, which qualified them to run at the Area Track Meet. They placed 5th, ran some great splits, and we're looking forward to what this group's going to do next year. This is the qualifiers for the girls' track team of 2019.
Okay, next up is the Central High School Boys Track Program, and Coach Holsher.
Thanks, Coach McCauley. Thank you all for having us here tonight. We had 11 guys get out of District going to Area and Regionals. We'll start with the two that aren't here. Tristan Lopez, he's a junior. He ran on both the 4x2 and the 4x4 that got out. And Xavier Young, who was an alternate on the 4x2 and also the 4x4 that got out. In front of you tonight, we've got, starting over there, Tanner Dabbert. He was the second leg on both the 4x2 and the 4x4 that got out. Christian Gabaldon, the third leg of the 4x2. Adrian Ane, he was our third leg on the 4x4. Steven Soto, he made it in the 300s, which, really cool story on him. He's really more of a 110 guy, 110 hurdler guy, and kind of got clipped by a guy that was behind him in the prelims and didn't even make the finals. He was one out of the finals in the 110s, and improved his time by 2 and 1/2 seconds to get into the finals of the 300s, and then increased another half a second to make it on to Area as a 300 hurdler, which, it was one of those times that the human spirit took over and his wielding self to the next level, which is pretty cool. That's what sports are about, I think. Who we got next? Logan Counts, he was our opener for the 4x4 relay. Malik Finley, he was our opener in the 4x2, and also a Area Qualifier in the triple jump. Jay Sean Hall was one of the legs on the 4x2 most of the year. He was also a really, really good triple jumper. Antonio Uriegas made it in the 800. His story is a lot like Soto. He really didn't run the 800 a whole lot during the year. He was really a 2-miler and a miler. And we knew that, just because of the way the meets line up, there was never enough time between the 2-mile to let him run the 8. We didn't feel like he'd have enough energy. But at District, the schedule opened up, and he jumped in there. And one of the coolest things I've seen in 21 years, on the backside, the second lap, the backside, his teammate is actually in front of him on the way to, and it was his race, and Antonio pretty much held three other guys at bay. He just stacked them up on the backside and wouldn't let them by, and took his teammate at the last 20 meters to go on to Area. Another really human will story, I think. It was really cool. And Brandon Sabaka, he's a, this is, was his 2nd time at Regionals. He's 3rd, 3-time Area Qualifier in the pole vault, and he did most of that this year on kind of a bum shoulder. And the way I like to put it, tried doing a pull-up with one arm, then that arm's hurt, and you're still going 13-6 in the air. Pretty impressive. These guys, there's a lot of really cool stories, and I could probably talk to them, talk to you on those stories for an hour, but here are your 2019 Area and Regional Qualifiers.
Okay, next up is the Lakeview Girls Track Program. Coach Leeper's here tonight. Coach Kintner's the head track coach, but she's still out on maternity leave right now. So, Coach Leeper?
So, first, I'd like to thank the school board for giving us this opportunity to stand here and recognize the kids who have worked extremely hard since August and Tuesday, so I really appreciate y'all and the time that you've given us. I'm not Coach Kintner, but I had the opportunity of stepping out of my comfort zone to coach more than just distance runners, which was really scary, because they move really fast, and I didn't know how to, how to even coach that. So, I really appreciate their patience with me, and I'm super proud of, of what they can do, because they can all outrun me, and that's really fast, so. I'd like to recognize freshman Catherine Pippin. She advanced from District in the 2-mile, and that's a, that's a lot of running. If you, if you, I mean, you feel like running 8 laps, you can do that if you want. Another freshman, Angelina Baltazar, she advanced in the mile relay. Jade Parker, she's a junior, also advanced in the mile relay. Annalisa Garcia, she's a senior, also advanced in the mile relay. And the wounded one up there, Jordan Pickney, she advanced in the 100 and the 200 to Area and as a Regional Qualifier, so we're really proud of her. They put a lot of faith into me when I had no idea what their events even were, because I've never watched them as closely as I probably should've to know what even good times were. So, I'm very proud of these young ladies and for being them, so, thank you.
I think one of these young ladies, we had to go pick up at the golf tournament and take her to the track, maybe if I remember right. Okay, next up, the Boys Track Program at Lakeview High School, and Coach Covington.
Good evening. I just want to, first of all, thank the board and all the admin. This is my first year being head coach here, so I was pretty excited about that. Let's go ahead and get into it. I have some boys aren't here today. They are actually helping some friends who, you know, had some damages to their houses, and a couple of boys had to go to work. But for our post-District Area Qualifiers, we have Austin Bandi, who ran the 300 hurdles. We have Anio Baiza.
Up, work hard, and very proud of this group. Girls' group, thank you, girls. I'm trying to speed it up. Now I got two teams. I got two teams. All right, boys, come on up. We had a couple guys that couldn't make it. That did a great job for us this year. Real quick, Ryan Swars and Max Harvey. They did a great job. They were busy, had work and things to do, couldn't be here. But I just wanted to mention them anyways. Real quick, team honors, again, Abilene Invitational first, Midland first, San Angelo Invitational first, Spirit Award, part of that homecoming. You didn't want to see the pictures of these guys, they wasn't pretty. They were district champs, ninth year in a row, in thirteen of the last fifteen district titles. Riley Hill state qualifier in two events, actually three events, fifty free, ended up sixth place at state. Hundred back stroke, qualified fourth, had an unfortunate slip, and ended up eighth, but would have finished fourth or better had that not happened. He also set a new school record in that hundred back, holds the regional record in that event, a hundred back stroke, and good chance to make an All-American. We don't know till June, when all the times from the country are in. Good chance to make All-American in that. Boys four hundred free relay qualified for state, district runner-up, regional runner-up, state qualifiers, first team all district, first team all region, honorable mention all state. We had two good relays this year. We lost one at district, which was unfortunate. It was our mistake, one of our swimmers moved at the start, but that would have been a top eight or ten relay at state. And then we had an official make a call without backup pads that could tell us what happened. And we lost a medley relay, which was another set of school record, and would have been top ten. So, you know, we had a great year. We did, you know, you always have a few missteps, and things don't go your way, but that's how life is, I tell them, and things don't always go your way. But we did have some great relays that never quite got to state, but we felt like they would have done really well there. Real quick, we had Riley Hill was first team all state, five boys named first team all region, honorable mention all state, seven boys were named first team all district, three boys named second team all district. Academic awards, we had five senior boys make academic All-America, and then we had six total for juniors and seniors make academic all state. Max Harvey and Cade Womack, National Honor Society. And then I'll go over it real quick individually. Start with Riley Hill, senior. Good story, Riley started at the kind of end of his eighth grade year, and he's a heck of a swimmer. He had some shoulder problems this year, and worked with Jenny Corbett and several other people, had a few operations and all kinds of things, but still ended up sixth in the state, and would have felt like fourth in the state in a hundred back. So credit to him. Again, school record, district champion, regional champion, regional record. You know, he's in our, he's on school records, he owns a hundred back, freestyle relay, two hundred free relay, four hundred free relay, pool record, medley relay, two hundred free relay, four hundred free relay. District records, two hundred medley, two hundred free relay, hundred back, regional record, hundred back. Signed a letter of intent to swim at SMU next year. He was our Hollands Award winner, academic All-America, academic all state, Riley Hill. Josiah Hargit, first team all district, first team all region, honorable mention all state, third in district meet fifty free, fifth at regionals in that event, district runner-up, sixth place in a hundred free, medley relay district champions. He holds district records, two hundred medley relay, academic All-America, academic all state, will be attending Texas A&amp;M in the fall, Josiah Hargit. Cade Womack, second team all district in a hundred frees, fourth place at district, regional qualifier during the season swim, a two hundred free relay, two hundred medley relay, four hundred free relays, scored valuable points at all the Invitational meets, academic All-America, academic all state, and he also will be attending Texas A&amp;M in the fall, Cade Those are our seniors. Sophomore Charlie Janot, first team all district, first team all region, honorable mention all state, district runner-up in the fifty free, fourth at regionals in the fifty free, Hunter Flye, district champion, regional seventh place, medley relay district champs. He was on a four hundred free relay that qualified for state, holds the district record, two hundred medley relay. Just a sophomore, has come a long way, going to have a great future for Coach McGloughlin the next couple of years, Charlie Janot. Ninth grader Cody Fentress, first team all district, two hundred free district, third place, regional consolation finalist, Hunter Flye, third place, regional consolation finalist. Swam on various relays throughout the year, was the alternate on the four hundred free relay at state. Just a ninth grader coming along, he's going to be really good, he's going to help Coach McGloughlin out a lot, and Cody Fentress. In closing, I just want to say, I've enjoyed my forty-one years working for the San Angelo ISD. I love living in San Angelo, working for the SISD, it's a great place to raise a family, great place to live, I plan on retiring here. You know, it's, San Angelo's special, and I realize that, that's why I've stayed so long, even though probably some people wanted me to leave, I made it, so hopefully the door won't hit me on the way out. And, but I think Coach McGloughlin's got a bright future, should be here for a while, and again, thanks for everything, and I won't be here next year.
Coach Haig, we need you to stay right there for a moment. There's one award, ladies and gentlemen, and audience member, that Coach Haig neglected to mention, that he is the National High School Boys Swimming Coach of the Year, not state, the United States of America.
All because of you and these kids, so. Thank you, I appreciate it, thank you.
Now squeeze on in there. Okay, next up is the Central High School baseball, and Coach Patrick.
Thanks, Coach. Well, I was going to start off with what Dr. Duttloff just said, and talk about Coach Haig and National Coach of the Year, and I was told to make this speech quick, so following Coach Haig, I think I can do just that. I tell you, this group of young men, and it's our first time to have a female manager, this group, a lot of these guys have been with me on the varsity since freshmen. We have thirteen seniors this year, three of them couldn't make it, one just committed and signed on with Trinity, so he was on a visit, that's our lefty pitcher Trey Nestle. So I need to recognize him, Koby Toborski and Joey Lozoya aren't here. But the reason why I say that, whenever you spend so much time with these guys over the year, and then you get put in this district, we looked it up, together, we've traveled over five thousand miles back and forth, and when you talk about the hours, and when you break down in Cisco, and you stay until 4:00 a.m. with these guys, you definitely, you love them before, and then whenever it gets that late, you start second guessing, and it's, but I'm just joking, guys, sorry. But I tell you, they broke a school record with wins with twenty-four, or excuse me, they tied a school record, twenty-four wins, they were twenty-four fourteen area finalists, and if they can tell you the way their competitive nature is, that they feel that they should have still be playing, and you know, like I tell everybody, if you had a coach worth the crud, then you would still be playing. You know, out of the, all the teams that are still in the playoffs, these guys, whether it was their freshman year, I think, what is it, four, eight, there are sixteen teams, I looked at it, and we played twelve of those, and I say that because, you know, twenty-four wins, and you add up all their wins that these guys, that are seniors, have had, when you put the strength of schedule in, they have played the toughest schedule in Texas, traveled more miles than any team in Texas, and I can't speak highly enough. So, for some of the individual awards, we don't have the all-state, that's not done until the state tournament, but we've had several, I think we had eleven all-district honors, and I'll tell you those guys here in a second. We had six all-state academic. So again, they're not only smart, we don't have the number one GPA ever at San Angelo, but we have several top ten, that's for sure. So first, I'll talk about the four-year letterman Mikey Cruz, just raise your hand, Mikey, they're all out of order. He, four-year letterman, signed to play with the number one ranked Angelo State for next year. Blake McKeska, first team all district, and academic all district, academic all state, four-year letterman, Hollands Award winner, Blake, he's the tall guy right in the middle. Rance Roses, four-year letterman, signed to play with Baylor next year, second team all district outfield, first team academic all state, academic all district. Jacob Charles, our only freshman to start, we started, if you count the DH, there's ten starters, and we started nine seniors every game except for Jacob Charles, he was our only freshman, he was honorable mention all district second base. We have Kyson Snelson, two-year letterman, Oscar Nino, first team all district, two-year letterman, and whenever we rank in the all-district, he was ranked as one of the top five players in the district. Oscar, raise your hand, sorry, keep going fast. They all told me, they asked me before I got up here, they said, one of them said, "Coach, who's the most important person up on that stage?" And I said, "Well, you know, all my bosses are up there, and behind me, and out here in the stands, so whenever I have to give a speech, so I'll slow down, sorry." Cole Nelson, second team all district, shortstop, first team academic all district and all state. Hayden Stevens, second team all district. Jalen Johnson, pitcher, one-year letterman. Dylan Abbott, honorable mention all district, academic all district, two-year letterman. Jathan Trevino, two-year letterman, academic, first team all district as well. Bryson Morrell, two-year letterman. Dawson Daniel, second team all district, four-year letterman, Defensive Player of the Year. And again, Trey Nestle, who couldn't be here, was academic, threw two no-hitters this year, which we've had some really good pitchers come through our program, several of them playing pro ball, none of them have thrown two no-hitters in the same year. Ryan Ramon, two-year letterman. Nixon Brandon, all-district Offensive Player of the Year, first team all district academic, first team all state, four-year letterman, signed with North Central Texas, and Team Hitter of the Year. Reed Holt, two-year letterman. Gunner Couch, four-year letterman, and he has a special story, I was telling him earlier today, since we have six A, we'd have to do some research, but I think he may be the only starter to start four years in baseball and football. So again, he's signed to play with Texas State next year, he's second team all district utility for baseball. Ethan Green, one-year letterman, and I'm done, so if I can drop the mic, I would. Like I said, these guys have had a great year, and we always talk all the time about relationships, and about, that's our main goal, relationships and leadership, and through those, they're able to win a lot of games, and I can't speak highly enough of these guys. They know I love them, and would do anything for them, and thank you for having us, great group of young men and ladies. Thank you all.
Okay, next up, we have our gymnastics team, we'll start with our boys. Come on up, guys.
First of all, thank you all for having us, we really appreciate it, and I will try to make this quick. I think Coach Haig, you put in forty-one years, you can talk as long as you want. All right. This year's team, we finished second at district and second at regionals, we finished tenth at state, we were hoping for a lot better, but just a lot of things happened to us throughout the season with injuries, and it was rough, but we finished strong, and I'll get into that here in a second. Freshman David Gell, he's not here tonight, Ian Hamby, if you can step forward, thanks, buddy. Ian did rings for us this year, and next year, I'm expecting him to be training all around. Ryan Ruiz was another freshman we had, he's not here tonight. And then we go on to our sophomores, Jacob Brody, sophomore, he did parallel bars for us this year. Then Cody Cox, he was our, in a district, he was sixth on floor, fifth on rings, third on vault, sixth all-around, and first team all district. At regionals, he was eighth on floor, fifth on rings, second on vault, sixth on parallel bars, tenth on high bar, seventh all-around, and first team all region. All right, Nick Hastings, another sophomore, he was district honorable mention. At regionals, he was fourth on vault and first team all region. Emiliano Hinojos, and these are all sophomores, this is a good thing. Emiliano was at district, first on floor, fourth on high bar, fifth all-around, first team all district. At regionals, he was fifth on pommel horse, ninth on rings, ninth on parallel bars, tenth on high bar, and second team all region. Next, another sophomore's not here, Robbie Shute. Then we have Hunter Walker, another sophomore. At regionals, he was seventh on pommel horse and second team all region. Now to juniors, we have Jonathan De Anda, competed parallel bars for us. Jonathan is one of those that we lost this year, really bad injury on parallel bars. He actually separated both collarbone, or right here from the sternum. It was not pretty, and he never yelled, screamed, he just sat there. So he's an extremely tough kid, and he won't be doing gymnastics for us next year. He is extremely talented in orchestra, and he couldn't play violin there for a while, so that scared him, it scared me too, I was just praying he'd get well, so he could compete U.I. Hill Orchestra, I was really worried about it, but he has been a tremendous asset to our team, and extremely proud of him. Okay, our next junior is Kayden Hernandez. Kayden started gymnastics last year, he was in a P.E. class, and I saw that he had a little bit of talent, it just came down to him actually committing to the program, and he worked his way up, I told him, I said, "This is what you got to do, and I'll put you in the varsity class." Well, he messed up, he didn't come to our practices over break, so I left him there. And, but he kept working hard, he kept coming in after school, and he worked his way up to the top six on the team, and competed pommel horse, which is extremely hard, and did a phenomenal job for us, so very proud of him. Now on to our seniors. I'm going to start with those that are not here, Mariano Deller, had an outstanding year, and had quite a few accomplishments, he was district floor champion, fourth on rings, first on vault, sixth on high bar, and first team all district. Regionals, seventh on floor, fourth on rings, first on vault, tenth on parallel bars, and first team all region. At state, he placed ninth on vault, and he was second team all state. The other senior that's not here is Wayne Hines. At district, he was fourth on pommel horse, first on rings, third on parallel bars, second on high bar, and first team all district. At regionals, second on pommel horse, first on rings, third on parallel bars, fourth on high bar, and first team all region. State, Wayne finished sixth on rings, and second team all state. And now Cory Springfield, senior, had Cory since seventh grade, outstanding story for us. I could tell the whole story, but Cory's overcome a lot, and state meet didn't go like we wanted, we just had a rough time, and we get out there, we had a good first event, parallel bars was terrible, then high bar was terrible, but we kept battling, and I had to get into them a little bit after high bar. And then on floor, two guys hit, third score, not so good, pommel horse, hardest event, it's kind of like girls beam, and I was like, goodness gracious, good Lord, help us finish strong. And first two guys go up, I always tell them, if this, the way you practice, don't get upset if you do your routine just like you do in practice and you mess up. Well, first two up, do what they do in practice, have one fall. Cory, third guy up, I mean, I want them to all hit, and have a great meet, but with where Cory's come from, and Charles Bryce wrote about it in the paper, outstanding article, and I got permission from Cory's mom for him to write a little bit, but Asperger's and autism, and that kid hit his pommel horse routine. And everybody after that started hitting their routines. I look at Coach Corbett, our trainer, and I said, "Jenny, that was the routine of the meet, that's how you finish a gymnastics meet." And every guy after him hit their routines. So we finished off a rough meet, we finished it off strong, and he helped us do that. His mom came and talked to me for two hours after that, and explained the whole story, which is amazing, and she said, "You can use this any time to try to motivate somebody," and she said, "That's why I'm telling you now." But outstanding story. Next is Skyler Canyon, is going to be going to Arizona State. Man, it didn't turn out like we wanted it, did it, buddy? Skyler got hurt mid-February, and he was our number one guy. The thing about Skyler, he was still there at practice coaching, he didn't go home, he put in the same amount of time that everybody else. And, so I told him, I said, "All right, he's supposed to be majoring in something else," but I said, "Hey, buddy, maybe five, six more years, go to school, come back, and take my job." But phenomenal, I have so much respect for him, because he was a true leader, he could have just, my season's over with, left, but he cared so much for the team, and that's what I try to coach. It's about the team, it's not about one individual, and he did a phenomenal job, and was a big part of keeping this team going. Skyler this year received the Hollands Award, the James R. White Scholarship, and also the Emo Milan Scholarship that the High School Association hands out every year. So that tells you what he's about, and he didn't compete mid-February all the way through the rest of the season, so people know him, and he did a phenomenal job. And y'all, we really do appreciate it, I got to be quiet, and that's it. Thank you all so much.
And our last group of the evening will be the ladies gymnastics team, and Coach Walker.
Thank you. It's good to be here, thanks for having us. I will, I will have to tell you that my girls were a little less than happy when I read them the annual order of tonight's meeting, okay, to see that they were last, and their first complaint was how much homework they have. And let me tell you, as a coach, that is a great problem to have, when your team complains that they have to get home to do their homework. So I explained to them that I apologize, that I had nothing to do with it, that it is the whole attitude of saving the best for last. And they did not buy that story, they said, "The best should go first." So I said, "I am not in charge," I said, "Coach McCully is in charge, and the school board is in charge, so you'll have to take it up with them." Girls, this is Coach McCully, turn around.
It was Julie, wasn't it?
Turn, now, girls, turn around. That's the school board. So their proposal is, if they win back-to-back state titles, can they go first next year? I would like to introduce to you, for the eighteenth consecutive year, the 2019 district and regional champions, and for the ninth time in school history, the undefeated 2019 Thank you for the opportunity to be here to brag about these young ladies, they have represented themselves, their parents, their school, their school district, their community with pride, and I am not only just talking about when they step out there for the two hours of competition, I'm talking about the bus rides and picking the trash up after it, I'm talking about the hotel stays, and the restaurants that we represent San Angelo wherever we go, and we get nothing but compliments on these young ladies, and they do more than just win, but they serve themselves and their school, and their school district with pride, so I'm always happy to brag on them. Thank you. A great group of girls. I have a young team, I'm going to start out with the freshmen and girls, if you'll just take one step forward, okay? Haley Ditmore, Karen Dunn, Caitlin Lidle, Hannah O'Neill is not here, Jaden Sawyer, Madison Vogel, and Haley Wardlaw, these are our freshmen. We have one sophomore, Haley, step up. And then our juniors, we have Afton Cummings, Melissa Hartman, Anna James, Savannah Razani, Carly Wallace, and Mary Grace Thompson. Okay, you can step back in line, we'll do the awards thing the easiest way possible. If you were, at district, it is the top six that are awarded, so if you place third through six, step forward at the district championship on any event. There you go, if, okay, there you go. Those girls were also named second team all district, now step back. If you place first through third on any district event, step forward. Those were first team all, yeah, I think you were the district champion there, Savannah. Our district champions, yeah. These were, girls were placed These were, girls were placed one through three, or were the district champion on an event, and were first team all district. So congratulations to them. At the regional championships, the top 10 are awarded. If you place fifth through 10th on any event at the regional championship, step forward. They can't remember. That also qualified them for second team all region. If you were first through fifth on any event, step forward. There, yeah, see, we're a little confused. That is the first team all region as well, and every single regional champion was on this team as well. And the last one that I'll do is the state championship. If you placed fifth through 10th at the state championship, step forward. There you go. And this is second team all state. Now step back. If you were one through five at the state championship, step forward. There we go. And this is first team all state. Go ahead and step back in line. Yes, very good. And I will tell you that out of this group this year, we had a state champion. Madison, will you raise your hand? Madison was the 28th girl from Central High School to be a state champion, and she is the fifth person on vault to be a state champion. So congratulations. We had a fantastic year. Like I said, these girls represent San Angelo and the school and themselves and their families wonderfully. I'm very fortunate. Yes, being with 14 girls on a daily basis is challenging, to say the least. And the easy part is the competition. So we have a great group of girls, and thank you guys for the opportunity to introduce them to you.
It's always an honor to get to recognize all of our students and their hard work, and we appreciate their coaches and certainly all of our student athletes. Item D is we're gonna do a recognition for Mental Health Awareness Month, and Dr. Detloff's gonna do that, I believe.
Mr. Lehman and audience members, our district is doing all we can to prevent suicide, including student suicide, which has become a problem nationally. One in five children are diagnosable with a mental health need. The average delay between onset of symptoms and interventions is eight to 10 years, and 16% of Texas high school students said they had serious thoughts of suicide within the past year. Unfortunately, not every child has a mental health, receives services. And then we also have a goal for children, youth in our community to make sure that they are not alone, and make sure that we know and they know that they are okay. So we just want to acknowledge that May is Mental Health Awareness Month, and we do all we can as a district to support all of our youth with any mental health needs. Also, a quick addition and an important addition is recently, we had a vacancy in a director position in our school district. We have restructured this director position, and it is now the Director of Social Emotional Learning. And we have hired Lindy Lyles, who has about 25 years' experience dealing with mental health issues and solving them and helping students and supporting them, as well as behavior systems. So Ms. Lyles will come to our district to support students that have needs, also to really install a positive behavior support system to surround our kids with that support net that they need to be successful. So our Board of Trustees and our district administration just wants to acknowledge and lift up that May is the Mental Health Awareness Month. Thank you, Mr. Lehman.
Thanks, Dr. Detloff, we appreciate that, and know that as we look forward to Ms. Lyles' time with us, that she'll be, she'll serve the district well. Our next item is item E, District Recognition for WCS Annual Wellness Member of the Year and Spring 2019 Working Well Coordinator Award. So Dr. Bright's gonna do this for us.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Lehman. Appreciate the opportunity to recognize one of our own for outstanding achievement. First off, we'll recognize the school district. The school district was recognized by Workers' Compensation Solutions as the Annual Wellness Member of the Year, which is big time. Y'all know PCAT and that group, Edwards Risk Management. This is the group that does that. The big reason, or the big plus out of this is, not only do we get the recognition, but the district was awarded a $2,000 check to go toward our wellness program in however way that we see fit. So that's a great accomplishment. Now, the accomplishment was only made possible by the lady that's standing next to me tonight. This is Kathy Jordan. She's coordinator of our financial services. She takes care of all of our accounts payable, payroll, all the benefits, voluntary and involuntary benefits, as well as runs our wellness program. And she has achieved a fantastic award as well. She has been awarded the Spring 2019 Outstanding Performance for the whole Workers' Compensation Program. So would you please help me recognize just an outstanding person, a person that I really love working with and does a fantastic job for us, Kathy Jordan.
Item five on our agenda is for anyone wishing to make public comments to our board team on items not on our agenda this evening. Do we have anyone wishing to come forward to do that? I see no one moving, so we'll assume that there's no one wishing to do that. Item six. Oh, yes. Sure. Yeah. When you get to the mic, just introduce yourself and... Thank you for being here.
Evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you, board members, and Superintendent Detloff. My name's Wayman Tankersley. I'm an 18th-year employee with the district. And I wanna thank you guys for taking a look at the Transportation Department since Mr. Garcia has left. It's not a conducive situation. We have a slogan, but we don't live by it. Students first, family always. The students are forgotten, and so is the family. And that's sad. Because we're only as strong as, we're only as strong as the weakest link in the chain. And each one of us here are of vital importance because we're a part of that engine that gets us from point A to B to C to D. And we can only be successful when everything and everybody is operating at the same level. So many things have changed at the Transportation Department, and I'm glad that you guys are taking a look at it. And there were 12 of us here at the beginning of the evening. There are six of us here, but I'm gonna leave that to the rest of my coworkers if they wanna speak. And if y'all have any questions or anything, you're more than welcome to contact me, and I'll gladly sit down with you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Tankersley. And just, I know, he knows this, but that I wanna make an announcement. You know, we can't really address any specific issues because it's not on our agenda this evening, but that's why we have, exactly why we have an opportunity for someone to come and speak to our board team on items not on our agenda, because it allows us to get information such as this. And we appreciate you coming forward and making those comments. And we appreciate other members of the Transportation Team being here as well. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to make comments to our board team on items not on our agenda this evening? If not, we'll move forward to consider the Certificate of Election. Oh, I'm sorry. Come ahead. Just tell us who you are, if you don't mind.
My name is Mauricio Franco Jr. I work for the district also, part of the Transportation Department. And I just wanna say, it's been, it's been great. I enjoy working there. I enjoy working with the people I do. I enjoy serving the community. I enjoy serving the kids. I love what I do. And I know I can speak on behalf of a lot of us there, that we really enjoy it. It's a great place to work, it's a great atmosphere. And we appreciate everything you guys do and all y'all support that y'all give us to be able to just move forward in pursuing excellence into these kids. So thank y'all for everything.
Thank you, appreciate that, Mr. Franco. Other comments? I promise I'll pay attention a little bit longer. Okay, if not, we're gonna move forward to item six to consider our Certificate of Election, and Becky's gonna help us with this. Okay, I'm signing a certificate, and it says Certificate of Election. This is to certify that at a general election held on May 4, 2019, and it says Gerard Gallegos, Max Parker, and Lanny Lehman was duly elected school board trustee, single member District Six for Mr. Gallegos, single member District Five for Mr. Parker, and yet large position for Mr. Lehman, and shall serve the term of office through May 4, 2013, or until replaced by a duly elected successor. In testimony therefore, I have hereunto signed my name and cause this name's Independent School District seal to be affixed this 20th day of May, AD 2019. And I'll date that and sign it. Oh, I'm sorry, through 2023. It would've been in short term. Thanks, Becky. Yes, that's... Our next item is item seven, which is Consider Statement of Elected and Appointed Officer, and I'll read that as well. It says, "I, Lanny Lehman, Gerard, it would say Gerard Gallegos, Sir, Mr. Parker, Max Parker, do solemnly swear or affirm that I have not directly or indirectly paid, offered, promised to pay, contributed, or promised to contribute any money or thing of value, or promised any public office or appointment for the giving or withholding of a vote at the election at which I was elected, or as a reward to secure my appointment or confirmation, whichever the cause may be, so help me God. Under penalties of perjury, I declare that I have read this foregoing statement and that the facts stated herein are true." And again, each one of us will sign that. Right. And now we're gonna do, first of all, I wanna thank Judge Dusick for her patience in being here. It's a privilege for us to be, for the oath of office to be administered by a good friend and someone that's a champion for so many in our community. So Judge Carmen Dusick's here, and she's gonna do the oath of office for us.
Do y'all want to do this one at a time?
Let's do it all as a group.
I just wanna say, I helped invite Judge Dusick here, our new district judge, who's been a friend of mine for many years. And I am very happy that, as far as I know, in the next 30 days, I don't have to be in her courtroom after I've made her wait two hours. But you did get to see the, one of the, these are the meetings that we enjoy the most when we get to recognize so many of our students and administrators that have done a great job. So I'm glad you were here, but I'm sorry you had to wait. And thank you for volunteering to come tonight.
It was, it was my honor. I knew a bunch of those kids, it was a lot of fun. But I will say this much, I thought the room was crowded for all of y'all. It's not, even, even your wives aren't here, guys. Okay, I will, I will get each of y'all to please come stand.
And Judge Dusick, while they are transitioning, I do wanna acknowledge that our judge was busy helping the families impacted at Bradford Elementary School by the severe weather over the weekend. So she had her sleeves rolled up and was working hard to support our families from Bradford Elementary over the weekend. So thank you.
Happy to serve, happy to serve. All right, gentlemen, will each of you raise your right hand, please? Each of you, let me do this. I will, I will repeat this, and y'all repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Lanny Lehman.
Solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the Office of School Board Trustee.
The duties of the Office of School Board Trustee.
For San Angelo Independent School District.
For San Angelo Independent School District.
Of the State of Texas.
Of the State of Texas.
And will, to the best of my ability.
And will, to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect.
The Constitution and laws.
Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, gentlemen. Absolutely. All right, Becky, thank you.
Thank you so much, Judge Dusick.
I know, I'm gonna take this all the time.
Okay. Thanks, Becky, for keeping us straight on that. Thanks, Gerard, for taking your victory lap.
I did it for all of us.
That's right, that's right, that's right, that's right. We did have a, you know, a wager, although there wasn't any money involved, about who would get more votes, whether it would be Gerard or Max. So, you know, do you want us to tell the results of that, Gerard?
Let's just put it this way, Taylor thought I was a writing kid.
All right. Item nine is selection of officers. I don't know that we're prepared... I don't know that we're prepared to do this, but we get to do it. So do we have a slate of officers, or do we need to make nominations by position? We have four officers that we need to elect, that being President, Vice President, Secretary What's the preference of the board?
Will we make a motion to keep it the same? Okay, I'll make a motion to keep it the same.
Okay, Gerard Gallegos has a motion to make.
Lanny Lehman, President. Max Parker, Vice President. Bill Dindal, Treasurer. Gerard Gallegos, Secretary.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor for a slate of officers as outlined by Mr. Gallegos. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Mr. Hernandez. So do we have any board comment or questions? Do we have any public comment? Thankfully, we don't. If not, we'll go, we'll go ahead and call our motion. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Okay, so we will move forward to item 10, which is consideration for our minutes. Do we have a motion to approve? Move to approve?
Second.
So we have a motion and a second for approval of our minutes from our meeting on April 8, 2019, our finance and pridgin' meeting, and our April 15, 2019 regular board meeting. Do we have any comments or questions from our board team? Any public comment? If not, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Our next item is our student enrollment report. We're provided that. This is for the 33rd day of, Monday of school, and it indicates that we were 44 students down to last year. We have 14,412 students currently enrolled in SAISD. So we appreciate the confidence that our community has in SAISD. Our next item, our report, excuse me, is our fifth six weeks average daily report. That report indicates that our average daily attendance in the fifth six weeks report period was 94.13. This compares to last year's final report of 94.63. So we're actually down about five tenths of 1%. That's how districts get paid, and make sure that we have plenty of enrollment. So we appreciate everyone's efforts in making sure that, when healthy, our students are able to attend school. Our next item is our partnership with Goodfellow. And I've got a little memento that we wanted to give Ms. Hanson this evening. Dr. Detloff wanted me to do this. For those of you who don't know Toni, you should. She's been a great addition to our, as an ad hoc member of our good, of our board team representing Goodfellow. She's been really faithful in her attendance and has done a great job of making sure that our relationship at Goodfellow Air Force Base remains strong. So I'll get up, and I think I want to present this, and have a picture made of it.
And Mr. Lehman, as you're transitioning and moving up to award Ms. Hanson, I'll, I'll do a little bragging on her. And Toni, this may be a couple of years old, but you have just as many accolades as our state champion gymnastics team. So we are so excited about honoring your service and dedication to our school district. It's truly been an honor to serve with you. And as Mr. Lehman mentioned, you are faithful in your attendance and faithful in your support of our students across our school district. So Ms. Hanson is the Director of the 17th Force Support Squadron. You may have received a promotion in the last couple of years by the time I've, I've read this. But you talk about a skill set. Her skill set involves technical direction and oversight to five flights, manpower, personnel, sustainment services flight, airmen and family services, force development, community services, family childcare, casualty affairs, civilian personnel, military personnel, airmen and family readiness center, education and training, professional development, airmen leadership school, and Goodfellow recreation camps, equipment rental, outdoor rec. And Toni continues to support the entire city of San Angelo. And I certainly know that one of the reasons that Goodfellow is successful is because of your service as well as our school district. So thank you.
West Hollywood, as it says, "In appreciation for your dedication and contributions to the children of San Angelo throughout your service, 2016 to 2019." Thank you, San Angelo.
Thank you.
Pass this box down to her. There's, I've got a box down here for that. Also, Toni's moving to Philadelphia, correct?
To the Pennsylvania area.
Pennsylvania area. And, and her, she's got so much confidence in Texas schools that she's leaving her daughter behind. We talked about some students already that were going to A&amp;M. I'm very proud of the fact that her daughter's going to Texas Tech. And so we're excited about that. And I know Bill and I are making sure, trying to make sure that her daughter's taken care of when she gets to Lubbock. So we appreciate your daughter's sticking around, and we certainly appreciate all that you've done for us as, as a board team member, and certainly all you've done for our community as, as a part of the team at Goodfellow. So thank you. I think we have an update on academic performance, and Dr. Ritter's going to help us with that.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Lehman, Dr. Detloff, and members of the board. Tonight, I was just going to give a brief update on our STEM Labs. As you know, we have had a great focus on increasing STEM in our, in our elementary schools, our middle schools, in our high schools, across the district. Science, technology, engineering, and math are such a great focus, as we know, as we follow through our learner profile, in developing our students in the areas that we feel are going to help them be more, be future-ready for future jobs that they are going to face and being prepared in their world. We're happy to say that when we first offered for our elementary schools to volunteer if they wanted to do the pilot year of STEM Labs on every elementary campus, any elementary campus that expressed interest, we're going to work with them to develop a STEM Lab on each campus. And I'm happy to say that we have 100% of our elementary, elementary campuses wanting to participate and eager to participate in this. So that's very exciting to all of us. That means all of our elementary students from kindergarten through 5th grade across the district are going to get to participate in this enrichment. Grade-level appropriate interactive challenges such as robotics, OzBots, coding, Minecraft, among other things. Laura Howard, our instructional technologist, is working with our campuses and our curriculum instruction team to develop a common platform of opportunities for our elementaries, so that we do have the alignment across the district aligned with our curriculum. And we will access this through, through STEM Labs, through enrichment activities and opportunities that will be provided for all students on our elementary campuses. So we look forward to the extension of our learner profile in the areas of development as the communicators, collaborators, creators, and critical thinkers. So we certainly appreciate the continued support of our board, our district and campus administrators, and through the vision of increased STEM learning opportunities for all San Angelo ISD students. I had asked for Gomez, Dr. Gomez, to come forward and share a little bit to highlight, give you an update on our STEM Academy at Lincoln Middle School as well.
Good evening. We shared with you all last month the progress we were working with middle schools in Lincoln, specifically with the Lincoln STEM Leadership Academy. We sent out those invitations just less than two weeks ago. We've had a great response. 16 students and families have already signed up and are very eager for this opportunity, as well as Ms. Sill, the teacher that will be leading those efforts, and Mr. Eckert, who also shared with you last month. So we just wanted to give you guys that update.
You have any questions for us about any of these opportunities for our students?
Well, when is the STEM?
The Middle School Academy?
Yeah, one's excellent.
Repeat the last part of your question.
When y'all going to start that? I couldn't get the mic turned on, that's what it was.
One more time.
When y'all going to start the?
It will start next school year. So this would be the first cohort, and they would have a three-year STEM pathway.
Okay.
And we kick it off, though, in the summer, the two days, July 29th and July 30th.
Oh, okay. All right, thank you.
We are hosting elementary STEM Academy also, or STEM Camp, a two-day STEM Camp in the summer as well. So it's just an exciting time for our students, and we have such an interest in it that we're just, we're just thrilled about the response that we've had. So thank you again so much for your support.
Thanks. Any further questions, or? I think as a board team, we're looking forward to that, so thank y'all. Let's move forward to our consent items. Do we have a motion to approve our consent items, A through G?
Move to approve, to approve consent items, A through G.
We have a motion from Mr. Parker and a second from Dr. Kingman to approve our consent items, A through G. Consent item A is consider donations. Those are listed on the board. I do want to make special, or offer special thanks to the San Angelo Schools Foundation, who made a contribution of $6,700 for exactly what Dr. Ritter was just referring to, our STEM camps this summer. So we appreciate the support of the Schools Foundation. And we've talked a number of times about Ms. Black and how great a job she does rounding up donations for the Winter Olympics. In this group of documents alone, Ms. Black raised $1,650 in support of the Winter Olympics. So we appreciate the efforts of Ms. Black. So that's item A. Item B is Consider Superintendent's Recommendations for Personnel for School Year 2019-2020. We do have an addendum to those outside of our board packet that was provided at our place. Does anybody have any questions or comments about any of our superintendent's recommendations for personnel? If not, item C is Consider Bids for Child Nutrition Department. Item D is Consider Bids for Child Nutrition Department Dairy. The first one, excuse me, was Refrigeration. Item D is Dairy. Item E is Consider Bids for Child Nutrition, Nutrition Department and Bakery. Item F is to Consider Allotment and Teak Certification. Item G is Consider Instructional Material Allotment. All those items were previously discussed at our Pridgin' to Board Workshop last Monday. Do we have any other questions or comments about any of our consent items? If not, oh, do we have any public comment? If not, all in favor of our motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Our next item is to Consider Bill's Accounts and Financial Statements for the month of April 2019.
Move for approval?
We have a motion from Mr. Dindal and a second from Mr. Parker to approve our Bill's Accounts and Financial Statements for April 2019. Do we have any board questions or comments concerning our motion?
Mr. Lehman, just a note to those that are continuing watching on our public access channel at this point, that all these reports we reviewed in our pre-agenda meeting, all these, all reports can also be found online at saisd.org, our website.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments concerning our Bill's Accounts and Financial Statements? Any public comment? If not, all in favor of our motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Our next item is to Consider an Amendment to the District's Official Budget and the General Fund. Do we have a motion to approve?
I'd like a motion to approve the General Fund Budget Amendment for May 2019, which changes the function codes which result in no monetary difference.
Second.
Thank you. So we have a motion from Mr. Gallegos and a second from Mr. Hernandez to approve the District's proposed amendment to the District's Official Budget with no monetary changes. All we're doing is making changes to different departments. Any questions or comments from our board team? Any public comment? If not, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Our next item is item 15, to Consider Approval of Our 2019 Summer Meal Program. And Ms. Helms is, who's presenting that?
I think we lost, we lost somebody along the way.
Dr. Bright, we'll let you do that.
Thanks. I'll waddle my way through this. But it's very traditional that we offer summer meal program. Some of it's tied into summer school, and the rest works with our Boys and Girls Club and YMC stuff. So in the packet on page 98, you'll see a number of sites along with start dates. Every one of these sites start June the 5th, and they go, some go through June, into June, and one actually goes through July 31st. So those sites will be Crockett, Reagan, Lakeview High School, the YMCA, the Northside, and Southside Boys and Girls Club, as well as Central High School. And we'll be offering breakfast, lunch, and snacks throughout the day to those sites.
That includes the freshman campus as well.
It does, at CFC. It sure does.
Yeah, thanks, Dr. Bright, and thanks, Mr. Gallegos, for pointing that out. Again, the start date is, in most cases, is 6/5, and those extend through 6/28. And then the YMCA will be serving breakfast till 7:31. And then we're estimating that we'll have breakfast served to about 16,000 students, student breakfast, lunch, about 9,700, and snacks, about 5,350, for a total student served of 31,000, or total meals served of 31,159. So I'm proud that the district's able to do this, and, and something that we've done historically. Do we have any other comments or questions? Do we need a motion to approve?
Move for approval of the selected summer meal program sites and proposed operational budget. Second.
Thanks, Mr. Dindal. So we have a motion from Mr. Dindal and a multiple seconds from Mr. Parker and Mr. Gallegos. Do we have any other questions or comments from our board team? Any public comment? If not, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Our next item is item 16, to Consider Full Day Pre-K Classroom Startup, and Mr. Henry's going to help us with this. Thanks, Jason.
Thank you for having me here today. You scared me. Full day pre-class, pre-K startup. Beginning into the school year 1920, San Angelo ISD will add eight full-day pre-K classrooms. These classrooms will be added at the following schools: Altaloma, Austin, Bel Air. Bel Air will actually get two classes. Bradford, Fannin, McGill, and Reagan. The Purchasing Department, along with the Curriculum and Instructional Department, have worked together with campus principals to generate a list of furniture and instructional materials needed. These needs range from student, student tables, chairs, playground equipment, interactive materials, to iPads and other technology items. The estimated cost is $120,000. The administration recommends approval of utilizing up to $120,000 for fund, from fund balance to purchase the requested items for the new classrooms. Shuri's here to discuss any questions as far as the curriculum.
So I'll just say, research proves that having full-day pre-K really makes a long-lasting difference for kids well into their years where they are working. And we want to make sure that we're providing that for our kids, so it's really a great opportunity that we're providing here. If you have questions about any of this, I'm really here more to answer questions for you.
Thanks, Ms. Brayden, for being here. And I think that our board team's really excited about the opportunity that has been presented to us, that we're able to increase the number of pre-K classrooms and full-day, you know, pre-K. Any questions specifically?
Ms. Brayden, do you have any idea about how many kids will be involved in this total?
Well, there's 18 per classroom, and we'll have 16 full-day classrooms.
16 full-day classrooms. Okay, great. Great.
So Bill's pretty good at math, but he might not be able to figure that out right off the bat.
We have Amy on it right now.
288. Okay, that's awesome. And I know the state is part of one of the education bills, I'm not sure if it's passed.
It's in both bills.
Right. Is additional money to districts. Is additional money to districts for establishing, you know, full-day pre-K. So, as we move forward as a district, are there other opportunities that we might have to expand this program even further? Do we have capacity from a classroom standpoint?
That is our goal. We wanted this year to just, until the funding was finalized. So, it's gone from, pre-K has been funded at half-day ADA, and so, moving to, we anticipate, full-day. But until that's actually done, we just wanted to go with what we have, increasing our current half-day to full-day, and then, the next years, continue to expand our opportunities for more full-day pre-K opportunities for students across the district.
And are there any special qualifications for students to be involved in full-day pre-K?
Yes. I just happen to have my handy list here. Students who are unable, yes.
Ms. Brayden, scoot over. That way, you don't hurt your back. That's all I was going to say.
So, students that are unable to speak English, students who are homeless, who have been in foster care, who meet federal income guidelines, who are eligible by being military children, if they are in the Child-Family Protective Services. And there's a new one, the STAR, something about, if you're chosen as a, something STAR. So, if your parent was injured in the line of duty, then you may also have this opportunity. That's a new one that just came down the pipelines.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to catch anybody off guard. I was just curious, you know, as we move forward, with more opportunities, there'll obviously be more students eligible for those types of programs.
The Star of Texas Award.
Okay. That star, not another star, huh?
We had to look that up.
Is that like a regular S-T-A-R or S-T-A-R-R?
It's a regular S-T-A-R.
Okay, that's good. So, go ahead.
And also, Ms. Brayden, you're saying that there's data that supports the progress that these kids make coming out of full-day pre-K in their future educational processes. Is that correct?
Absolutely. There's been a lot of research on pre-K, but specifically towards kids being able to persist throughout school, throughout their school years, and not dropping out, and being able to hold down a full-time job once they're out and in the community. And also, even a lot of research about relationships, building relationships, and having good relationships with others.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? If not, the motion is for us to utilize up to $120,000 from our fund balance to purchase the requested items for new classrooms. And do we have any public comment? Did you have something else? Are you ready? Okay, I'll call the motion. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Thank you, thanks. Yes.
I'll make the motion.
Sorry. And y'all still want me to be board president? Okay, so, I'm sorry, thank you, Becky. Good catch.
I'll make a motion to approve the administration's recommendation to utilize $120,000 from fund balance to purchase the requested items for the new classrooms for our pre-K.
And I'll second.
So, now, we have an official motion from Mr. Gagelso and a second from Mr. Dindel. I'll now ask anybody if they have any public comment. If not, all in favor of our motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Our next item is consider general liability, property, and auto insurance. Mr. Henry's going to help us with that as well.
Yes, Cherie doesn't want to help with this one. General liability and auto insurance, this is one that was, we had Edwards Risk Management down last week to discuss this with us. I think everybody's been a little concerned with the fact that we've had storms lately. The frequency of hailstorms in north and central Texas, combined with hurricanes in the, in southeast Texas, have put enormous pressures on insurers, resulting in many refusing to renew coverage or even leaving Texas markets altogether. For those that are still in the market, coverage deductibles and premiums have risen dramatically, putting strains on school districts and budgets across the state. During the renewal process, PCAT brought forth two three-year renewal offers and a third option of going out to the open market. Both renewal offers, both renewals offer the same coverage, including equipment breakdowns, cyber coverage, general liability, educators' legal liability, and auto insurance. Option one carries a $250,000 deductible and a total premium of $998,120. Option two carries a $500,000 deductible with a total premium of $928,120. I did, or Jeff did speak with Edwards Risk Management, and I know last week, they kind of made the joke, well, let's hope that it, we don't have any hailstorms. And the response we got back from Edwards today as far as asking if they were going to increase our premium or anything because of the storms, they said, Rick Edwards, who was here, said he spoke with the PCAT underwriting team this afternoon, and they are committed to the terms previously offered in our original proposal and presentation to the board last week. So, it didn't affect us at all. The administration recommends the approval of option one consisting of a three-year extension with a $250,000 deductible and a premium of $998,120. Do you all have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Henry, questions?
I was just going to point out, I think, one important thing is the fact that this treats all of our sites as one site as opposed to each individual building. We're close enough in proximity that it's likely that if we have a bad storm, we're going to have multiple sites damaged, evidenced by last weekend. So, having all of our sites managed by one deductible as opposed to a per-building, I think is important.
Yeah, thanks for pointing that out, Taylor. That, I agree. I think, you know, because our schools are, we have a lot of close neighborhood schools, we could have significant loss in one storm, as we just found out. Other questions or comments concerning the district's recommendation?
I'll make a move to approve the, of option one consisting of a three-year extension with a $250,000 deductible and a premium of $998,120.
Second.
Thanks. We have a motion from Dr. Kingman and a second from Mr. Hernandez to approve the administration's recommendation consisting of a three-year extension with a $250,000 deductible and a current premium of $998,120. Comments or questions from our board team? Any public comment? If not, all in favor of our motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Our item 18 is to consider our RFQ for annual financial audit. Mr. Guerrero is going to help us with that, and I appreciate the patience of our, our new audit team. And we, we think students are important, but we, when you get last on an agenda like we had this evening, we, we should have apologized in advance, but we appreciate y'all being here. Mr. Guerrero.
Well, just like the, the girls gymnastics team said, we save the best for last. And let the audit team know that this was their final test, anyway. Any questions? Mr. Lehman, Dr. Dela, board members. My name's Jaime Guerrero. I'm the comptroller for the district. As required by State of Texas, San Angelo Independent School District is required to have an annual audit of their financial statements. This year, we put out an RFQ, request for qualifications for firms interested in performing that service for us. We received several proposals. We had a scoring committee consisting of Dr. Bright, myself, Mr. Henry, and Hope Lotus, our business services director, to help score the proposals. We narrowed the field down to two firms, invited them in to do a face-to-face interview with the scoring committee. After those interviews, we rescored them and identified a candidate that we'd like to recommend to the board. But before we do that, we wanted to give you an opportunity to meet with those individuals and see if you had any questions or comments for them. So, at this time, I'd like to introduce Mrs. Jeremy Stevens with Aid Bailey out of Abilene.
Thank you, members of the board. As Mr. Guerrero indicated, my name is Jeremy Stevens, and I am a partner with Aid Bailey. And first of all, I just want to say thank you and express my, my thankfulness to you and let you know that we are excited to perform the audits for the school district in this upcoming year and to work with you and your team in performing that audit. I realize that it sounds like I'm last on the agenda, so I'll try to keep this short because I'm the, the person standing in between you and dinner, possibly. But I did want to give you just a brief overview of our firm, introduce the management team that we're going to assign to the audit. And if anybody has any questions, I will be more than happy to take those. Our firm, Aid Bailey, I like to call us a regional firm with a local flair. So, we are a regional firm. We have approximately 2,000 professionals, firm-wide, that stretch across 33 offices and 18 states. Locally, your audit will be serviced out of our Abilene office. Our Abilene office has about 75 individuals. And the great thing really about our Abilene office is, is we are organized by industry lines from top to bottom. So, everybody that's assigned to the audit, starting with myself as a lead engagement partner, all the way down to staff level one, has a focus in governmental audits and particularly with, with school district audits. Last year, our audit team for school districts performed the audit for 16 school districts in the state of Texas. They just kind of ran the gamut. We had, the smallest one was an ADA of about 100, and then, the largest was an ADA of about 24,000. So, we have several districts that are very comparable to your district. Like I said, we look forward to partnering with you. As far as, as, as my bio, like I said, I'm the lead engagement partner. I have been performing school district audits since 2003. I guess you could say I'm a bit punishment. But it's, it's, it's in my blood, and I enjoy to do it. I was admitted into my firm as a partner in 2012. Since that time, I've specialized in school district audits. Recently, was named as the department head of the audit department for our Texas offices. That's kind of my background. With me, I have what will be the senior management team of, of the school district audit for the, for the San Angelo Independent School District. It will be Kevin Randolph as the senior manager and Shelby Ebarb as the manager. I'll let them do a little background, just for the heck of it.
Hi, thank you all for having us here tonight. My name's Kevin Randolph, and I'm a senior manager with Aid Bailey. And I have been performing school district audits since 2009, and I think I work seven or eight per year. And it's my, I do several things, but I do primarily government, and school districts are my favorite types of audits I do. And I've found that I have a passion for doing them, and I look forward to working with y'all. And thank you all for having us here tonight.
Hi, I'm Shelby Ebarb, and I'm manager at Aid Bailey. I've been with Aid Bailey for eight years, of which time I've worked on school districts. I primarily work on governmentals and nonprofits, but focusing on school districts, cities, and counties. And thank you all for having us.
So, that's, that's our intro. Do you all have any questions?
Go ahead, Dr. Dela.
Thank you. I believe I've, I noticed this in some of your submitted materials, but would you just review quickly some additional names of school districts that you've worked with? Because you guys do have an impressive resume.
Well, the most comparable to the district would be Midland and Abilene. Those are, those are the two that are most comparable. And then, going down from there, Friendship ISD, Plainview ISD, Hereford ISD, Brownwood ISD, Burnet Consolidated ISD. Sorry, I'm drawing a blank, but I'm giving you some names.
That's perfect, thank you.
Other questions, Mr. Parker?
Yeah, it just wasn't clear to me. Are all three of you will be working on our audit, or which ones would be assigned to the San Angelo audit?
Well, we will all three be working on it. I pride myself in, in having a, a hand in every one of my, my audit clients, so I will be onsite at least a portion of the time. When you do 16 school district audits, you do have to split time somewhat. But myself or the senior manager, Kevin, will be there onsite the majority of the time for the audit. The day-to-day activities of the audit will be managed by Shelby. And then, from there, I would expect probably a senior person, which would have four to five years' experience, and then, a couple of staffier people.
And again, are all of you in the Abilene office?
Yes, all of us are out of the Abilene office.
We haven't done many of these interviews, so I hope we have a long relationship with you guys, too. And I appreciate getting to know you, and I know we'll get to know you better.
Yes, sir.
And I appreciate, and as we've already said, I'm sorry you had to wait this long, but as you can tell, we had a lot of celebrations to go through.
It's, it's always good to recognize the students. I mean, that's, one of the, one of the good parts about my job is I go to a lot of board meetings, and a lot of those times, I see a lot of board recognitions, student recognitions, that's always fun. You know, I get to see students singing songs and all that kind of stuff, which I typically don't get to see at, at my work. That's, that's, that's a good benefit for me.
Other comments or questions for Mr. Stevens or his team? If not, we need to make a motion to approve that Aid Bailey, Aid Bailey, is that right?
Aid, kind of like I.
Like Ides of March?
Sure.
Aid Bailey LLP to perform the district's annual financial audit for fiscal year ending August 31st of 2019.
That's a second, if that was your motion.
Yes, that's my motion. Do we have a second? So, we have a second from Mr. Parker. So, we have a motion by Mr. Lehman, a second by Mr. Parker. Do we have any other board comment or any public comment? If not, all in favor of our motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, same sign, motion passes. Thank you all so much again for your patience, and we look forward to working with you guys. It sounds like we found some folks that, it sounds like we found some great folks to work with. Neighbors. Our final item this evening is item 19. Ms. Holahan's going to help us through that.
We really did save the best for last. No, I'm teasing. This is the second reading of Board Policy CW Local: Naming Facilities. This policy clarifies the definition of facilities or portion of facilities, identifies criteria for name selection, which include local geographical names related to a particular area, historical significance to a geographical area, names that describe the program housed in the facility, retired distinguished educators granting permission for renaming facilities or portions of facilities in their name, deceased person who has historical significance for district, community, state, or nation, and/or a person who has made substantial contributions to their field or endeavor in, or to society in general. It also describes the process for requesting renaming facilities or portions of facilities. That includes, the request must be made in writing with justification for abandoning the previous name if the facility currently is named. A request presented to the superintendent for review, the superintendent will place the, place the name of the, on the board agenda for the next two regular board meetings to permit the board to receive public comment. And at the second meeting, the board will select the name. Pretty, we, I am asking the board to approve the administration's recommendation for the CW Local Revised Policy Naming Facilities. Are there any questions? Then, we're just looking for...
I don't have a question, but I will make the motion that we approve administration's recommendation to amend CW Local, which has to do with naming our facilities.
Thanks. We have a motion from Mr. Parker and a second from Mr. Dindel. Any questions or comments? Ms. Holahan, how would, how do we identify? I mean, we've had some people that have, you know, at least indicated that they would like. Will y'all contact those folks now? Okay. We've had a couple of folks, I think, that are interested in renaming. We've had a couple of folks, I think, that are interested in renaming, and now that we, once we approve this new policy, this revision, then y'all will contact those folks. Okay. Any other questions or comments? Any public comment on our proposal for changes to CW Local? If not, all in favor of our motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Our next item is announcements. We have Paige's graduation, May twenty-ninth, two thousand and nineteen, at the McNeese Convention Center. That's a change in location, or I think we had it there in the...
Couple of years ago.
Yeah. Rather than at Sarah Barnhart. So that's at six PM on May twenty-ninth. I think Ms. Flint, Ms. Mizelle Flint's going to help us with that, accepting that graduation group, as well as Central High School graduation on June first at the Janelle Center. The Lakeview graduations at Foster Communications Coliseum. Mr. Dindel's going to accept that class. Our financing pre-agenda workshop on June seventeen, June tenth, and our board training with Dr., with John Tanner is June seventeenth, in addition to us having a regular board meeting. Do we have any other things, announcements, or anything else we need to cover this evening?
Mr. Lehman, I'll add in closing at the conclusion of this meeting, our administrative team is gathering. We are assessing our situation at Bradford Elementary really hourly, so we are huddling after the closure of our board meeting this afternoon. And right now Bradford Elementary is closed Monday and closed Tuesday tomorrow. We have plans to start school again on Wednesday, this Wednesday, but we are assessing that situation hourly, and we will continue to do that and provide updates.
Thanks, Dr. Detloff.
Yeah, I just want to make a comment after this weekend, especially Saturday, with, you know, a special thanks to David Creek and his whole maintenance crew and those guys. They just, they did an amazing job. They all went to work, you know, I ran into David somewhere along the way, and I asked him, where do you have them? He goes, I've got them everywhere. And they were up at seven in the morning, or they were onsite at seven or right after it happened. And, you know, they were out there in that heat picking up roofing and branches and, you know, you just, you realize you have those guys right there, and when they step up and do what they did all day Saturday, and I guess y'all went into Sunday as well and today, but it's, I'm just thankful we have guys like y'all, David, and your crew, because they've done a wonderful, wonderful job, as did our administrator, Dr. Detloff, and all those that were here that just jumped right in and made those decisions and really helping those people out who were really affected, and some who were just going, what do I do next? And y'all were there to help them. So thank y'all for everything y'all do. Y'all did a wonderful job.
And I want to thank all the volunteers all over San Angelo that have been helping the people in, especially in the Bradford area, and are continuing to help. It's been a real team effort.
Thanks, Gerard, for your comments, and certainly Max. I think Gerard may be a qualified storm chaser before long, you know, because he was out there getting into areas where I don't think anybody could get into, you know? So he's taking, he knows the backroads to every single campus. I think he was getting in to take pictures and let the board know what was going on so we'll make sure that the next storm that comes through, Gerard's an official storm chaser.
At two this morning, I say at two this morning, Gerard, you might as well get out.
So I think, again, the opportunity that we had to recognize students this evening, thanks for putting that all together, Carl, and certainly as we move forward towards graduation, it's an exciting time in our district, so we appreciate everyone's attention this evening as we storm through our agenda. I don't think we have anything else, and here are no objections. We'll stand adjourned.